Good evening. Today is November 7th, 2024, and I will call to order the Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission meeting. And with that, if you'll stand, Mark is going to lead us in a prayer and Charles in the pledge.
Father, again, we come to you with grateful hearts this evening, Father, just thanking you for all the blessings of our day-to-day lives here in our town, Father. And we just continue to ask you to watch over those that serve the town and keep them safe. Everybody that lives here, our citizens, we ask that for them as well. Father, we've just come through an election in our country, Lord, and now we just pray that unity will come together and this country will be able to pull their differences together. And, Father, just continue to bless our land, continue to bless our country, and continue to make sure that you stay in the forefront of all of it. God, go with us now as we do the business of the town. Forgive us where we fail you and continue to watch over us and our families as we do this. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Charles. Our next item is citizens' comments.
We don't have any time.
Okay. Then we will move on to the approval of the minutes of the October 3rd, 2024 meeting. Counselor, are the minutes in order for this meeting?
In order as to form, Chairman.
Okay. Anything from the commission? Not, I'll hear entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Selena. Further discussion. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from October 3rd, 2024, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. We are now on to new business. Our first item, under annexation zoning and plan of service request, is Catalyst Design Group, Rocky Fork Ammable Road, annexation and PRD zoning request.
This is a tract of lands on Rocky Fork Ammable Road. It's a vacant tract, 29.79 acres. It is a piece of property that has been requested for annexation once before. It was recommended by this commission at past first reading at council and then was withdrawn prior to second reading at town council, so it was never annexed or zoned. So it has come back now, slightly different plan than what we looked at before. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, and the Courtyard of Stewart Creek PRD, which is on the north and west and south side of it. Its land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential in this area. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Rocky Fork Ammable Road as a minor arterial. Out of quick right-of-way dedication would be required along this route, along the foot from there. This requested PRD is for 85 single-family lots, which would be a density of 2.85 units per acre. Eighty-five lots, 29.79 acres. We had a few comments. Requirement in fire flow is our standard fire flow requirement for residential, 1,000 GPM at 20 PSI. CUD has indicated that they do have adequate fire flow at this location. We had a couple of comments. Those of you who were on the commission when we looked at this before, this property has a pretty significant topographical change to it from kind of rear as it moves forward to the road. And so there will be some significant grading. The steepest topography after grading is completed would be located kind of within open space on the rear of the property. Prior development plan we had for this, there was going to be actually lots, kind of within some of the lots, there would be some pretty significant self-changing. That's not the case anymore. We have one comment regarding riding of the sanitary sewer behind or between lots. They have corrected that. That's not shown anymore, so we can remove that. That was the only real comment left for them to address, and they've done that. This would connect to the Courtyard of Stewart Creek development. This map doesn't look like that's what would happen. We georeference their plan with the Courtyard of Stewart Creek plan, and they didn't match up, so we're working through that with them. Obviously, that's what happened, obviously, when the plans come in, because obviously the road would extend and connect there. There will also be a separate connection to Rocky Fork Ammable Road directly to there, into this development from that. The lots are, well, the smallest lot, excuse me, the smallest lots are just under 7,000 square feet. Some would be larger, 1,600 to 3,500 square foot range on the houses. And they are meeting our requirements for open space and improved open space and all that as well. I believe that's all of you.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Kevin, where's the road going to be when it connects to Courtyard? Is it going to be on the north side?
It's that north side, yeah. There's a, their drawings that they submitted show it connecting, but when we georeference that into the parcel data, it didn't match up. But, yeah, it would be the road that's, which is actually being constructed. They've got the binder down and everything on that roadway, but it would be on that north side. They've got it labeled as Road A, but, and then you have the connection then directly to Rocky Fork Ammable Road. The plan before, just as a refresher, the plan before had 100 lots. This is 85 lots, so it has been reduced. And basically, it's been shrunk down, and some of that steeper topography in the back of the property, southern end of the property is, they're leaving some of that alone and then still doing some grading in that area as well. Primary reason they're having to do some grading in there is there is a maximum elevation above sea level that CUD can provide the fire flow requirement, and they're excavating that area down somewhat to get to that elevation.
And that takes out the lots where we had the really dramatic increase in the backyard by doing this, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that, they're still going to have a fairly dramatic increase. It's just going to be not as dramatic, and it's going to be located off of the lots.
Southern part of that?
Yes.
Is where the?
On the southern part of that area. It's kind of in that, where they've got some open space left alone there.
And we are going down 15?
Yes, yeah, 100 to 85.
Okay.
Kevin, on developments like this, I mean, this one, you know, looks a little tight as far as if people are going to be parking on the streets. I know buses are having trouble getting down certain roads when people are parking on the streets and such, and they can't back up. So, and they definitely aren't going to back up on Ammable Road. Is there any way that, I mean, there's a place for a bus stop for kids in these neighborhoods that we can ask for?
We, we do, we require bus stops when they're private streets, because typically the school board, their policy, they try to have a policy that their schools, buses don't leave public roadways. And so we do require that typically in that situation. These are proposed to be public streets, so we, our ordinance wouldn't specifically require it. There's certainly a location, I mean, you got a mail kiosk near the front there. There's a location where one, they could look at having one. These do have 35-foot setbacks to the garage. The houses themselves, I think, are at 20 or 25. The garage would be set back 35, so you would have room, you would have room to park for in the driveway, at least. I know some of our developments, we don't have that, and so that's where we're seeing, probably seeing some of those problems, where we had 20 or 25-foot front setbacks to a garage. So, I mean, that's something we could, they could talk about potentially having that is, like I said, you kind of have a natural location, kind of where you have a mail kiosk anyway with some parking spaces and that sort of thing.
So the roadway, to her point, would be a standard width that would accommodate a bus?
Sure. I mean, yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be a two-lane road, 20, 22 or 24 feet. Most of these probably 24.
Can you discuss the east side of the project? One of the issues that we've been focusing on is transitioning lot sizes and also buffering between that. So if you could fill us in on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, they've got, the property to the east is R3, which is a 10,000 square foot minimum size lot. Some of those lots are bigger because they're on some cul-de-sacs and whatnot. They do have an open space area there. I don't know what the exact depth of that is, if I could figure that out. You're probably in the range of 30 to 40 feet depth, kind of between those lots and those, the new, proposed new lots and the existing lots that they're showing as an open space area. They're not, they're showing trees in that area. I don't know if there's specifically, if there's some existing trees on this property that they, if they're going to leave those or proposing to plant new. There are certainly planting new within the development along the streets and things of that nature, but it's just shown as open space, the trees right now. I'm going to be a question the developer can answer if they're proposing any kind of buffer strip or not. We didn't evaluate this development on the proposed new rules because they're not in place yet, but, so certainly there's some, some things if, if we're six months from now, would be different probably, assuming the new rules get adopted. But, the property, you know, the west and north side are very similar in lot size to this, as far as that existing PRD approval there.
Well, and as planning, both planning and council know, we've been working on density levels and things like that now for the past several months, having a lot of meetings to decipher how we can make developments less dense. I know we haven't gotten there yet. It still meets our ordinances as?
As it's currently.
As we currently have been accepting, correct? So you've got a density level of 2.8 units per acre here. R3 would allow three units per acre. Am I right? So this is less than an R3 density?
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that. I just got my calculator out. It stays up here. I don't have your brain, I wish I did. So the bottom line is, as the ordinance is currently written, this does meet our requirements.
Yes.
We're within, from a density perspective, we're just under, if we were looking at a straight R3 zoning, we're just a tad under that, so we're in line, and it's consistent with the surrounding zoning.
Correct. You've got PRD on three sides, basically. You do have the R3 on one side. The R1s across the street there, we had one house and one lot there. From the surrounding, all the developed area around it is consistent.
Okay. It's a tough piece. There's a lot of rock in the back.
There's a lot, and a lot of topical changes.
It's pretty rough.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion? I'll move to approve. I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second? I'll second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this request, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to preliminary plats. Our first item is Rocky Fork Road, 2302, Rocky Fork Road Development, Keppley Properties LLC.
Now, this is a plat, this is three lots on Rocky Fork Road, on 3.46 acres, semi-R1 zone. We had several comments, most of which are pretty standard comments. We'll note that this is a, Rocky Fork Road is a collector, and they're showing right-of-way dedication there to meet those requirements, against standard fire flow requirements there. This Lot 3 of this proposal, there's an existing house on the property, and they're keeping that house with Lot 1 and then creating two new lots. Lot 3 does not have any road frontage. They are proposing an access easement, which is allowed to have one lot off of an access easement under our subregs, and they are proposing that. So comment number seven would need to remain regarding the legal documentation establishing that easement and maintenance of it, and all that would have to be submitted with the final plat and recorded with the final plat. We had a few comments regarding, they're showing a steel encasement for the sewer line underneath Rocky Fork Road, that's not required, and water services have to be minimum of one inch. Those comments would need to remain. The access easement is required to be 50 foot wide. They're only showing 25, so they will have to widen the access easement to meet our But other than that, with those remaining comments there, again, largely standard comments, we would recommend approval.
Questions or comments? Okay. We got a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this PRD, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Next, we have Alfaro PRD, Rocky Fork Ammable Road and Bradley Road. Owner, developer, Porfirio Alfaro.
Now, this is five lot, preliminary plat for five lots, 0.96 acre. It's at the corner of Rocky Fork Ammable Road and Bradley Road. We also have the final plat they submitted as well. That's also on the agenda, next item. Again, several standard comments. We'll note, again, the major thoroughfare plan does designate Rocky Fork Ammable Road as a minor arterial. Out of right-of-way dedication is shown. They also did show a right-of-way dedication. This isn't a major thoroughfare issue, but Bradley Road is a, it did show the right-of-way dedication 25 feet from the sewer line for that. It just has a minor local street. The fire flow is a little bit higher here because the building area is larger, so they'll have to either sprinkle to reduce that or meet those requirements. We had some questions. The property assessor actually had about three different, there's three different small tracts of land here that they're combining together to do this development. The property assessor actually had three different owners shown. They said they've kind of worked that, worked through that. I think they had some bad information with the property assessor had some wrong information or something, so we're working through that. Still doesn't show that on the information that we had, so we're sure, I want to keep that comment just to be sure it's nailed down before we, obviously, before we sign the plat, record the plat, all that'll have to be nailed down and worked out. Comments eight and nine were some utility comments that they'll need to take a look at regarding manhole depth and sewer grades. Those will be looked at when they review the construction plans. Fire department did require that the private entrance drive be 26 foot wide, just to be sure there's access for them. This would be access, all five of these lots do have frontage on Rocky Fork Ammable Road, but all their access would be from the back, off of that private entrance drive. And so I just wanted to be sure that it was adequate width there. The rest of the comments, 11 through, I guess, 13 or 14, were all from CUD, so we'll keep those, because they'll need to look at, read, preview all their comments to meet their requirements there, so. So we would recommend approval with those remaining comments.
Questions or comments?
Does this include sidewalks on Rocky Fork?
It does not. That's probably something we're working through with our project that we're doing, and so they're dedicating right-of-way, but we would be building the sidewalks as part of the project.
Do we have?
This was, that was approved as part of the PRD, so I don't think we have them.
Okay.
Because this is just, this is the plat.
I was just trying to get, I was trying to remember what we were looking at.
I mean, they were largely two-story units, two-story houses. I'm trying to remember myself.
Kevin, am I missing the mail kiosk or any extra parking here?
Well, the mail kiosk, since this is only five lots, so most likely wouldn't have to have one. The, as far as the parking, there is 38 feet between that drive aisle that comes in from Bradley Road back to the back of the house, so you have, and it's double width, so you have room to park for inside each driveway.
Kevin, is it eight units or more that require central mail box?
Yes. That's my understanding, yes.
It's a good catch, though, Selena. It's a good catch. Way to watch for it, right?
Got to get their mail somehow.
Or not.
That's right.
Other questions? If there are other questions.
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Okay. Now, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This preliminary plat is approved. Now, we're on to final plats. Alfaro PRD, Rocky Fork Ammable Road. Owner, developer, Porfirio Alfaro.
Now, again, this is the final plat for what we just looked at. This, again, five lots, 0.96 acres. Again, several standard comments. Again, the right-of-way dedication is shown. Fire flow comments the same. Property assessor comment is the same. We have a few things on this one. The setback on this, on this plat, as far as that 38-foot setback on the rear, does need to be labeled. I think they've got it shown, we just need to label that. And then, comment number nine regarding the water and sewer main size and all, that's been taken care of. Again, the same comment regarding the private entrance drive, it still needs to remain. And then they did show all the sanitary sewer line sizes in the manhole location, so that's been addressed. So you can remove nine and 11. And then number eight, again, they show this setback, they just need to label that. Number eight's modify that one a little bit. And then the rest of the comments, again, were from CUD, so we'll need to look at those. So with those remaining comments, staff would recommend approval.
I'm going to go out on a limb here and say this is probably consistent with the preliminary plat we just looked at.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion then.
Move to adopt with staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this final plat, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are next on to Seven Oaks Business Center, re-subdivision of Lot 7, Ammable Road and Seven Oaks Boulevard. Owner, developer, Bob Parks and 360 Development LLC, CSC Properties.
Now, this is a lot that's at the corner of Ammable Road and Seven Oaks Boulevard, 1.5 acres. It's two lots, C2 zone. We had, again, just some standard comments. We saw a site plan on this proposed Lot 7B last month, so this is just dividing this property up. It also is dedicating a sanitary sewer easement across Lot 7B to serve Lot 7A. And so the comments were all pretty standard comments, other than they do need to show that sewer main within that easement. They show the easement but not the main, so it was the only comment we had left, so, again, but with those remaining comments, we would recommend approval.
Do I have a motion then?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Charles? Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? This motion is approved. So our last item under final plats is Lot 1, Seven Oaks Storage, 859 Seven Oaks Storage. Owner, developer, Bob Parks and 360 Development LLC, Incana Developments.
Now, this is a, this lot already exists. This is not really creating a new lot. This is, it's 4.47 acres. Primarily, this is dedicating utility easements, primarily water easements, and also a little bit of sewer easement. And so we had several standard comments. This is the lot that was approved for the climate-controlled storage development there. Again, this would just create those utility easements around those buildings. We did have one remaining comment, number six there, was still need to remain to show that public sewer service connection to the sewer main. They show, they show the sewer main but not the connection to it, so we just need to keep that. So with those remaining comments, we would recommend approval.
Okay, we've heard Kevin's explanation. Do I have any questions concerning that? I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to site plans. Our first item is Big Sun Gas Station, 206 Big Sun Lane. Owner, developer, Smyrna Investment, Inc.
So this project is located within the Cedar Creek PUD subdivision on the corner of Eden Springs Road West and Big Sun Lane. The development is going to consist of a convenience store with fuel station. The PUD was rezoned in 2019 to amend, amended in 2022 to allow the use of townhomes. And a convenience store with a fuel station on Lot 3 only, which is this lot we're talking about here tonight, along with C4 uses, government and administrative services, and daycare center on the two commercial lots fronting Big Sun Lane. If approved and developed, the Lot 2, which is the rear lot, is owned by the town and would be the only remaining undeveloped tract within this PUD. The proposed convenience store is to be 5,000 square feet and have six fuel pumps. Vehicular use area on the site, these numbers are a little bit amended from what one package brought last week, since we received some revised plans. So proposed, it went down a little bit, so we're at just under three-quarters of an acre at 0.73 for vehicular use area on the site. That does require 3,201 square feet of landscaping. Applicant is showing for 3,485, so meeting our requirements. Parking required of 50 spaces, and they're showing for 50 spaces, and that does require two handicap parking spaces, and they're showing for three. The landscape plan shows a type-C landscape buffer along the northern property line, which abuts the townhomes. Streetscaping is shown along the roadways with shrubbery between the trees. In addition, landscaping is shown in landscape islands throughout the site and at the base of the convenience store. Architecture elevations show the building to be finished with a mixture of all primary materials, of brick, glass glazing, and stone. All four wall elevations are shown to have at least 75% primary materials to meet design review requirements. In addition, the building will need to meet all requirements set forth by the Eden Springs overlay. We have a couple of staff comments later on that will detail the requirements of the ESO a little bit more in detail. So design review is being met with the building, but the Eden Springs overlay has some additional requirements on top of design review, so the Eden Springs overlay requirements are not being met at this time. Standard comments, one through six will remain at this time. Staff comment one and two are from the utilities department. Those comments will remain. Comment three asked them to dimension out the canopy on the plans. They have done so, so that comment can be removed. Comment number two, the Eden Springs overlay requires the building entrance to face Eden Springs Road. So the applicant has shifted the building 90 degrees to face the front of the building towards Eden Springs Road. Comment number three can, comment number four can be removed as a result. Number five goes back to, number five and six go back to the design review for the Eden Springs overlay. So starting with five, the overlay does require a minimum of a 24-inch base on the building utilizing a different material or color, and this should be reflected on all four sides of the building. Since we received revised elevations, they still do not meet this requirement, so the comment will remain, along with the next comment. Comment number six, 50%, minimum of 50% of the facade of, should be window or void area on the front of the building. As shown, it's just above 31%, so that number does need to be increased to meet Eden Springs overlay requirements. Comment seven, the site is required to be at least 20% previous per ESO, not 15%. It does appear by the eye that it does meet the requirement. We just need them to change the numbers on the cover page to reflect, so. Comment eight, we're asking a generic comment about the dumpster heights, just due to the height of the dumpster enclosure. Applicant did note that this is something that the owner will coordinate with at a later time once the dumpsters are ready to be purchased. So with that stuff, feels confident removing that comment. Number nine is a Eden Springs overlay requirement as well that any electric transformers, utility pads, water meters, gas meters, electric meters, ground-mounted air conditioning, or mechanical units should be screened, which can be done with landscaping, fencing, or walls. The north side of the building does have some wall-mounted units, which do need to be screened, so comment number nine will remain at this time. And then number 10, we do need a traffic study compliant with section 3.200 of the zoning laws to be submitted to staff for review. So comments three, four, and eight all can be removed, and with that, staff does recommend approval. If y'all, of course, do not feel comfortable with the Eden Springs overlay requirements that still need to be met and revised on the plans, obviously feel free to recommend deferral of it to be revised. But staff does feel confident recommending approval and reviewing administratively at a later time if approved.
Mitch, how do we get from 31 to 50 as far as the front facade to meet the ESO would be, so it would be met?
Obviously, probably we're in between where the windows are at, maybe metal or glass, or just adding a little bit more up higher, just decorative of sorts, just to enhance it a little bit more. It's not, it seems like a drastic amount, but we're most of the way there, so something that can be done.
And I guess I was going the exact opposite. It seems like we're most of the way there, meeting it in just a few tweaks, and that's why I asked you that question, to see how difficult it would be to get there. I'm not hearing that it would be.
Coming from not an architect's standpoint?
Yes.
It seems like it'd be something that'd be relatively simple, like said, we're most of the way there. There are buildings out there that are entirely glass, so probably just a little bit of redesign with the building, but.
Well, yeah, like the other issue with the 24-foot base, 24-inch, rather, not 24-foot, 24-inch base at the, if you had maybe the windows a little deeper, you know, extend lower to the, toward the, toward the base, or toward the ground with that two-foot or three-foot base, whatever they end up with, kind of make a natural transition there to, might be an option for them to help kind of meet that requirement.
But I am hearing that staff's comment, or staff is confident, rather, that you can work with them to get there, and you're not viewing this as, from the town's perspective, as something major that has to be done.
No, I mean, they need to meet the requirements, but I don't think it's something that is hard for them to do or undoable at all.
But when you went, when you went back to the developer for the ESO to ensure that the building was facing Eden Springs, they also knew about the other ESO requirements. So is there pushback from the developer on getting to those requirements?
The response letter said, "See the elevation," so it, I don't know if it's something that's in process of being done. I haven't spoken with the applicant about this issue, but the building is rotated, but the elevations were not changed, so.
Yeah, the rotating the building was, I was concerned that could be an issue, and it wasn't. Because it was something that, it was a pretty major change to rotate the building, not in degrees.
Other questions or comments?
They may be here and can speak to that.
Is there anybody here from SEC that could talk to this? Come up and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, John Monner with SEC, 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro. To answer your question, we did request it from the architect, and they did think that it was following the guidelines, but the intent is to meet the ESO, and we will discuss it again with the architect to make sure that he changes it so we meet the guidelines.
So if they got approval, that's one of the conditions anyway, correct?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm not hearing that you guys are pushing back on that. No. Okay, and that you'd want to work with staff to meet the ESO, okay? Other questions?
This appears to be a particularly sensitive site plan, given the proximity to Rocky Fork Middle and Elementary Schools. So I just had a couple of questions. Do we, and were in other actions approving a number of residential developments of various density along Enon Springs? So what I'm trying to get a feel for is how we're handling what could be anticipated as future walking and biking to school. And I'm wondering particularly, it appears there are sidewalks on Big Sun Lane, but I'm not seeing sidewalks on Enon Springs. And I'm wondering if I missed that door.
There are not sidewalks on Eden Springs currently. I think it was, our thought was, at some point, Eden Springs is going to be, too many lanes added to Eden Springs. The sidewalks should get built in. There is internal streets, Percival and all those do have sidewalks. And this, we eventually, that network from Eden Springs to the school would certainly get built out with the property behind this gets built. That's when that connection would get made. I hope Charles may be able to speak to that a little better. That was my recollection, at least, of why there's not sidewalks on Eden Springs.
Kevin, didn't the town acquire the right-of-way on each side for another lane?
Yes.
All the way out?
Yes.
Yes, the right-of-way has been, requires a 101-foot right-of-way there. Like I said, we just built the median, two lanes with the 10-foot shoulders until that point that we come back in and add that additional lane, curbing gutter, storm, and sidewalks.
So we're not ready for sidewalks at this point?
No.
Okay. That's a good point with schools over there, I think.
But currently, we have the, I think, eight-foot shoulders, so we have that until the other lane and sidewalks are built.
Would sidewalks be on both sides when that widen?
Yes.
Okay.
I think one even calls for a multi-use path on one side that we're possibly, but we do have right-of-way acquired now that we'll be able to handle that.
Okay, Charles, anything else?
Yeah, have you considered presuming that we're not going to put the sidewalks in for a while? Have you considered anything like rumble strips or something on Enon Springs to provide some type of warning to a car if it's straying into the?
We're looking at doing the pavement marks, the rumble stripe-type pavement markings. We're looking at that with different vendors that, coming out of our safety plan that we're currently working on through Public Works, that we are looking at possibly putting some of those in use.
I probably drive that street three times a day. It's between my house and my son's house. And there are more and more kids after school using the shoulders.
Right.
So I think rumble strips probably.
Yeah, we are looking at that to see if we have a vendor, our current vendor we have right now is striping, is not doing that, so we are looking at under our safety options.
So the project we have in front of us right now doesn't impact what we're talking about as far as the?
No, because we already have the current right-of-way, and they're built behind the right-of-way, so we still have room to come in when we get to that point to add that extra lane, curbing gutter, and sidewalk.
Okay. All right, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments?
A motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to Gamble Lane PRD, northeast corner of Gamble Lane and Eden Springs Road West. Owner, developer, Harling, Harlingstead Land LLC.
This is almost directly across Eden Springs from the previous project we just discussed. This is a townhome development for 36 townhomes near the intersection of Eden Springs Road West and Gamble Lane. The, this portion of parcel 91 was rezoned PRD in September this year for the proposed use of the townhomes. Three ingress and egress points are proposed with two on Gamble Lane and one on Eden Springs Road West. The surrounding zoning consists of a mixture of R1, which does include a cemetery, and a 7.18-acre single-family tract to the north, R3 to the east, and C2. Square footage of vehicular use area for the site, 0.7 acres, does require 3,054 square feet of landscaping. The applicant is proposing for 4,500 square feet. Park requirement of 162 spaces, and they're showing for 168, and they are showing one handicap space as well. The landscape plan shows a type-A landscape buffer and a six-foot-tall vinyl privacy fence along the northern and eastern property line, along the single-family zone properties, including the cemetery, which, with the exception, does not have a fence around there, but there are fences, there's a fence along the single-family portion where it is developed. Additional streetscaping is shown along both road fringes, as well as spread throughout private roadways within the development. Architecture elevations show the townhomes to have a mixture of brick and fiberglass cement board siding. The front of the units will be primarily brick with accents of fiberglass cement board on some of the units. Overall, all units surrounding the garage will be brick. Side elevations will be comprised mainly of brick with the gabled windows on the second floor having a visible siding of fiberglass cement board. The rear of the units are to have first floor entirely brick and the second floor gabled windows to have fiberglass cement board. As presented, the elevations match the approved PRD and are consistent. Standard comments, one through seven at this time will all remain. Comment number one, the, more of a informational comment, but the, there is a subdivision plat that will be required to separate the commercial lot from the townhome lot, as well as dedication of any public easements, which would be required to be recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits for the townhomes. Comment two is a utilities comment that has been addressed, can be removed. Number three, we asked for road name approval list, and they have provided that to us, so comment three can be removed as well. Number five, we asked them to extend a sidewalk out to Eden Springs from Bovington Drive, and they have done that, so that comment can be removed. And comment number five, required to have decorative pedestrian scale lighting. They have added that to the plans and have detailed it as well, so that comment can be removed. Number six, similar to the last one, any screening of any electric transformer utility pads, water meters, gas meters, electric meters, and ground-mounted air conditioning units, mechanical units shall be done, and that can be done with vegetation, fencing, or walls. And we do ask they screen those within the development, as well as anything visible from the main roads, so that comment will remain. And then comment number seven, they were showing a handicap parking space per ADA. One does have to be van-accessible, so we asked them to change dimensions on that. They have done so accordingly, so comment number seven can be removed as well. With that, comments one and six are all that remain, as well as the standard comments, and staff would recommend approval.
Mitch, just looking at this, this is consistent from the site itself and from the elevations.
Yep.
As far as what was previously approved.
Elevations, landscaping, everything matches up.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
I think it's great they're putting a wall on the east and north side, fence around it.
Yep.
I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. The little reason is, I opposed this when it first came because of the small townhome project, and I thought we probably needed to know where some of that is. So I just want to clarify, it's a great product, but because I was on the other side of this and the original side of it, I just want to be consistent.
Thank you, sir. We are now on to the next site plan, Grand Wash Retail Gas Station, northwest corner of Nissan Drive and Sam Davis Road. of Nissan Drive and Sam Davis Road. Owner, developer, Car Wash Pro Designers, Riverstone Investments LLC.
Yeah, this is a little bit larger site plan here tonight. Grand Wash is proposing a second car wash on a commercial parcel on the northwest corner of the intersection of Nissan Drive and Sam Davis Road. This would be, for clarification purposes, this is their second location, they're proposing here within Smyrna, not two-on-one track, so part of this development, you'd have the car wash on the northern part of the track. The center part, you would have a retail building, and then the southern part would be a gas station. The access to the site would be provided via both road fringes, with the access on Nissan Drive having a deceleration lane to enter the site, as well as two exit lanes. Sam Davis Road would have a single entrance with two exit lanes. The car wash use on the site was approved for special exception within a C2 zone by the Board of Zoning Appeals during the meeting in September of this year. The typical car wash would have adequate stacking for 24 vehicles with a secondary smaller truck wash attached to the service oversight, which would service oversized vehicles, not semi-trucks. Square footage of vehicle use here on the site is 2.1, 2.28 acres. That does require 9,922 square feet of landscaping, and they are showing for just under an acre worth of landscaping, so well exceeding our requirements. Total parking required of 98 spaces, and they're showing for 116, and that does require five handicap parking spaces, and they are showing for five as well, as part of that. The landscape plan shows a bolstered Type C landscape buffer along the property lines adjoining the remaining Sam Davis property, which is zone R1. Due to the existing vegetation on site, the applicant is required per designer review to replace the trees above 18-inch caliper of a similar species in close, as close to the location of the original as possible. Additionally, street trees are shown fronting Nissan Drive and Sam Davis Road with shrubbery offset lining the parking areas. Further shrubbery is shown within landscape allowance throughout the site. Architecture elevations show the car wash on all four sides to have a mixture of various materials, which would include brick, stone, glass glazing and ephes and fiber cement board. We did receive revised elevations, so now at this time, all four elevations do meet designer review requirements of the 75% minimum for primary materials. The convenience store and retail center, as well as gas station, would all have similar materials as the car wash does, and do meet the designer review requirements with the 75% minimum on all four sides. Standard comments, one through six, all remain at this time. All the staff comments at this time have been addressed, but comment one regarding the out-of-turn has been discussed with fire department and can be removed. Number two, making sure we have adequate reach for fire suppression, and that can be removed as well. Comment number three, the total amount of parking spaces, they were, had a deficiency of handicap parking spaces on site, based on what ADA requires, so they have added the adequate number of handicap parking spaces, and so number three can be removed. Comment four, we asked them to explain that a proposed five-foot easement, so we just asked what the easement was for, and that was more so for a dedication to TDOT to, with the deceleration lane. We don't have any other properties on Nissan Drive which have deceleration lanes, so some, probably something nice to see, they have submitted a traffic study, TDOT is okay with what is being shown. So that is something that would be, have to be coordinated with TDOT since Nissan Drive is a TDOT roadway. Comment four can be removed since we are okay with what's going on, we're understanding what the easement dedication is for, so. Number five, previously the south elevation of the car wash didn't meet our requirement for 75%, it is now meeting it, so that comment can be removed. Number six, utilities comment can be removed. And then number seven, there was a, there were some areas where there was some shrubbery that was missing that should have been added in there. We just asked them to add the shrubbery in those spaces where it was lacking, and they have done so accordingly. So with that, all of the staff comments can be removed, and standard comments are all that remain, and staff recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Mitch on this one?
Yeah, Mitch, same question as the item before, what's the, what's the situation with getting sidewalks added in here? This is, well, it's a huge opportunity for this, for the town, for one, to link up from a greenway perspective, two pretty big areas of green space, right? All along this corridor, from Jefferson all the way back to this intersection, and I don't see any listed here. Is that because of TDOT rules, or is that future plans?
Charles, anything on that?
Currently we don't have a future plan, since that is a TDOT right of way, but we would have to go through them to secure that right of way to add sidewalks. But currently, that's, we're in our multimodal pedestrian and bike plan at this time, and we'll be looking at that, but currently, on state routes, we don't have that.
Good, Matt.
I guess just to follow up on that, so why would we not ask them to put a sidewalk on Nissan? Not necessarily in the state right of way, but?
That'd be something, but it'd be another sidewalk that wouldn't have any connection to it on Nissan Drive at this time, until we're, put that into the plan that that is our overall plan to start adding those, but to have one little section there to nowhere until that's adopted into a plan or into a TDOT plan to add those.
Because it could be placed in a matter in which would not work with what would be approved and?
Right, and then you have your open area there on the Sam Davis Home property, you'd have a lot of gaps that you would have to go back in until we come up with that overall comprehensive plan as to where our greenways and sidewalks are going, to make sure that we don't have sidewalks just leading to nowhere and we have, you know, all those extra gaps in there.
And our historic overlay doesn't reach this far, or offer any protections to this type of property that was?
Currently, we don't have that on the overlay yet, but like I said, just because they are state routes. But they are putting them on Jefferson, which is a state route, so that is kind of their new standard that those, it does have sidewalks on it, out to past Harbor Isle. So now that they're putting those in, that's something we could relook at to see, you know, but make sure that's on our comprehensive plan.
Okay. Yeah, the sidewalks, to put sidewalks here, you would have to be on private property for now, at least, unless TDOT were to somehow acquire the right of way, because we typically don't require dedication. This is something they're looking at doing with, with TDOT for this decel lane they're adding, but you would have a sidewalk along the road, but it would be on private property, which is?
Just seems that we're missing an opportunity.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying, and we've talked in years past, we have talked about needing sidewalks along Nissan Drive. I mean, that's something we have talked about in the past, we just haven't put a plan in place really to do it.
How would a sidewalk be funded? Would that be funded as part of an impact fee?
I mean, typically, impact fees are more capacity expanding, so probably not. If it was just a sidewalk, it would probably have to be funded a different way than through a grant or through kind of fund.
Okay. I, I, I see Charles's point, and I realize that, you know, it's almost putting a piece of puzzle down in the middle of something and then trying to make the other puzzle pieces work instead of having the, the master plan, so it's all connected from the front end, and that may be over simplification.
Well, it's just you have so much private property already developed along that roadway, like Kevin was saying, we would have to go in and acquire that right of way, and that would be something that the town would have to do, TDOT doubt would do.
What I'm hearing is there's not a master plan for this area, and this property particularly, and I guess what I find frustrating is that we don't have, you know, if the town of Smyrna values the historic nature and social value of this property, you know, a wire, and we may be, right? We might be working with them, the Sam Davis Home, in partnership to try to alleviate properties like this going for sale, so they can maintain a proper balance sheet. But this is the first domino of many that could go down the entire next half mile, and you completely lose visibility to this.
Yeah, that's all going to develop eventually.
Well, and keep in mind, they're the ones that came to us and, and requested this land to be sold.
Yeah.
It wasn't something that someone's come in here and, and said, "We're buying it."
Well, it's a, it's a sell-the-farm situation, right?
Yeah.
To keep the business open, and, and that's where you get into, does the town of Smyrna have a responsibility to get into a part of a private-public partnership there to develop that to where they can maintain solvency without having to do this?
Yeah, and I think that's, I, I hear what you're saying, I think it's outside our purview.
Yeah.
As far as that goes.
So with that being said, you know, looking down the future, if this is going to open up to commercial properties all the way down the lane, how do we ensure there's proper walking infrastructure, I guess, is, you know, circling back to that?
Well, I think what Charles says is that when we get to a point that we feel comfortable with a master plan for sidewalks here, you know, the plan will be drawn up, it will have to work through the state, since this is?
Well, we're working on the pay-a-bicycle plan in conjunction with the major thoroughfare plan, so that's currently in the works right now.
We saw it happen on Jefferson Pike, too, and when they came in and widened it, they put the sidewalks in, we didn't, right, so?
That is a new TDOT standard.
Right.
Mitch, could you talk to us about the special exception, you know, how it was granted, the reasons behind it being granted or, or given?
Yeah, so the reason it was presented to Board Zoning Appeals a couple months back, there's a list of four uses within the C2 zone district, which this is currently zoned, and a car wash automobile detailing facility is listed as a special exception within the C2 district. So the applicant presented a very similar site plan, asked for a site plan to give the BZAs visual of, hey, here's what it may look like, more than, obviously, the BZA is not going to nitpick and tweak the site plan, that's what we're here tonight for, but just to have a better idea of what it would look like, make sure it's got adequate stacking, it fits what's going on in the area. And at the meeting, it was approved 4-0, and it felt like it was, it was an adequate fit.
So with the approval, it's, it's entirely acceptable to have this usage here?
Correct. The retail center and then the gas station are, were already acceptable. The car wash was that piece they wanted additionally, and that was the variance that they were granted at the meeting, so like I said, we got all three pieces here tonight.
So now it's up to us to look at it from a site plan?
Design standpoint, yeah.
Yeah, standpoint, to make sure that it's meeting, you know, the requirements of the actual site itself, and it's, it hits our design review requirements, and the things that typically go with a site plan approval, but the usage is a decided matter.
Yeah, usage is acceptable, yep.
You know, I remember when this came to us to, to consider the Sam Davis property, selling the property, and like Matt said, they're trying to balance their books a little better, they need the income and the revenue off the property, and I think we all supported that. I remember a gentleman getting up and talking about how they would be very sensitive to what they would try to sell this to. In other words, they wanted to keep this property sensitive, and it sounded like they went to the BZA to get this approval, is that?
Correct.
It's C2 already.
Yes.
But I don't know if it's in harmony with what we were told when they came to the meeting to get permission to sell it.
True.
I don't know if that harmony is there with, you know, we're going to put a gas station on the corner of Sam Davis Home. It's kind of the mindset that I thought I heard they, we wouldn't do, so.
And that could be the case, I don't know, but we zoned at C2.
I know, I, I know, we took somebody at their word, I think, and, yeah.
So what's before us, being zoned C2, is acceptable, and, and with the exception, the car wash is also, we're, we're, we have decided it's acceptable, is that correct?
From BZA.
The BZA has decided it's acceptable.
I guess I'm still not fully understanding why we're not able to take advantage and put a sidewalk on Nissan Drive. The argument that it goes to nowhere is only valid until the next parcel develops, which I think is probably nearer rather than farther away. And in terms of lining up with a future bike path or whatever, you know, there's limited options here, and you could always redo the northern part of it to tie in to whatever other bikeway or sidewalk was to come around. So I would think we are really missing an opportunity if we don't add a sidewalk at this point.
The, everything surrounding us is Sam Davis property still. Of course, I haven't had any discussion that they plan on doing this again.
Well, I understand that, but the, the logic that led us to approve the sale of this property is going to be the same as we move further north. Impacts are roughly the same, the financial need of the Sam Davis Home that we all support, you know, may require subsequent sale of, of out parcels in the future.
Want to suggest, come up, would you feel, instead of having to build a sidewalk at this time, at least dedicate the right of way portion to have it at a later point to come in?
I mean, I think we could, dog, I mean, it's a state highway, dedicating?
But the developer donated, no, giving us an easement, dedicating an easement or right of way for a sidewalk in the future?
Sure, I think there's somebody, is there someone here representing the development?
Yes.
If you could give us your name and address, please?
Car Wash Pro Designers, 6400 North Northwest Highway, absolutely. If the town would like us to dedicate space for a sidewalk, we'd be open to that. If there was some contribution to be escrowed, we would be open to that as well.
I'm sorry, I don't know who called your name.
Nick Bollong with Car Wash Pro Designers.
Okay, any other questions?
Mark, Tim, I, I wasn't here when the meeting came about, when Sam Davis was selling it, and I know when we sell our land, we can't dictate what goes on it, right? But since this is a historic property, what were they thinking? Or what, what were, did they ask for a certain zoning?
They asked for commercial zoning, and it was granted, so to Kevin's point, it meets the zoning requirement, right?
Right.
And so my comments were, yes, it met the zoning, but yes, I thought we were told they'd be very sensitive about what they put there.
Who?
The applicant.
Okay.
Selling?
Well, not Sam Davis, I'm sorry. Well, not him.
Selling the rest of the property is not that easy, the, the board can't just decide to do that, the legislature had to approve?
Right, they, they went through a lot of hoops to make it happen.
And so I don't know that the legislature would be okay with continued parceling off of it.
Well, they've done it once, there's a precedence, right?
Well, there's not a precedence, I mean, they, they asked permission to do that, but there comes a point where you start eating into the actual historical site, I would say.
It's been a couple of years, I think, since they rezoned it.
It's been at least, yeah, it's been a while.
Three or four years.
It's been there for a while.
I think we're good. Okay. All right. And Charles, as far as if this were to be, a motion were to be made to include the setting aside of right of way for a sidewalk, is that, that would be staff's recommendation? And escrow? And escrow?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Move to adopt with staff comments and the additional comment concerning sidewalk right-of-way.
Is that good? Jeff, to include escrow?
It's happening.
Okay. Second, do I have a second? With no seconds, I don't think I'm getting a second here, so this motion would then fail for lack of a second. Okay. Then this motion fails for lack of a second. What-
You have to make an affirmative motion, of course, here you're deciding what about this site plan do you not like, not the use, what about the site plan do you not like? And so someone would have to make a motion, you have to make an affirmative motion to, if you're not going to prove it, to deny it.
Or defer.
Or defer.
Or defer. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer it.
I have a motion to defer.
To defer 30 days?
One month, yeah. Next meeting?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and second to defer, any further discussion? All those in favor of this deferral, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm a no. Okay, next we have Village Townhomes, Wildwood Drive and Country Village Drive, owner, developer, Infinity Home Builders, Scott Budler.
This is a site plan for Villagewood, which is a multifamily residential development, previously approved PRD zoning by the council back in October of 2006. The development consists of 75 units on 13.63 acres. Several topographical features exist on this property which resemble sinkholes and are being developed around as a result. Two access points are shown for this development, one on Country Village Drive and one on Wildwood Drive. Vehicle or use area for the site, 2.67 acres. Square footage of open space and landscaping as a result would be 11,667 square feet. The numbers here have been revised a little bit. Additional landscape would be 11,750. We're sitting over three acres of landscaping by preservation of existing vegetation on the site in those topographically challenged areas. So they are meeting our requirements as far as that's concerned. Total parking required of 150 spaces, and they're showing for 234. Handicap parking space is not a requirement since it is a townhome development, but 10 are shown. Landscape plan shows a type A landscape buffer around the property lines bordering the single-family properties. In locations where the buffer is not shown, the applicant is preserving the existing vegetation. Shrubs are shown in front of each unit, as well as trees planted within landscape bounds throughout the parking lot. Architectural elevations show the front elevations to be built utilizing a minimum of 60% brick-stone mixture with the sides and rear to be hardy board. Elevations within the approved PRD require vinyl siding. In lieu of vinyl, the applicant is proposing to substitute with fiber cement board in the place of vinyl. Standard comments, one and two remain. Staff comment one was regarding the reach for the fire department must be within 150 feet of all portions of the building. Was able to speak with the applicant today. They believe it's sorted out, shouldn't be an issue, just going to wait for the fire department to verify that on their end to make sure it is a non-issue anymore, but for that reason, we'll keep staff comment one. Staff comment two, we asked them to show a correct verification of landscape square footage since it differed on a couple of different pages, so they have updated those numbers, so comment number two can be removed. And with that, staff would directly on approval.
We've looked at it on several occasions, have we not?
Yeah, they were coming up on their three-year expiration here next month, so they brought it back into us for reapproval.
They weren't going to be able to get permits before the site plan approval expires, so they went ahead and preemptively brought it back to you.
Questions for Mitch or staff on this?
Kudos for only four comments, that's, that's a record.
We've had several times come here, so we've, we've had a chance to, we've lived with comments now, they've done a good job.
When this was originally approved, vinyl was allowable, along with several other things, so we had a-
Back in 2006.
Yeah, so there were a lot of things-
Yeah.
-that were, were kind of already set in stone.
Right.
And we are, they are agreeing to substitute-
And they're, they're going to do fibers from that.
Versus the vinyl, which helps.
That was a discussion we had back in 2021 when they came through last time, about changing that up, so.
Okay. Other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion then. Move to approve?
Staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion for the site plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the site plan is approved. We are now on to our last item under site plans, Wawa 170, Sam Ridley Parkway West, owner, developer, Equitable Property Company LLC.
Yeah, Wawa is proposing to locate a gas station within the Sewers Landing PUD on the corner of Sam Davis, sorry, Sam Ridley Parkway West and Mott law College Boulevard across from the YMCA. The development would be the first within this PUD. A future roadway connecting in the additional parcels within Sewers Landing would provide the only ingress and egress point to this development. The convenience store is to be 6,374 square feet with 16 fuel pumps. Vehicle use area on the site, these numbers, most of these numbers haven't been updated since packets went out, so we're at 1.49 acres for land, for vehicle use area on the site, which does require 6,500 square feet of landscaping. Applicant is showing for 7,633, so meeting our requirements. Parking requirement of 64 spaces, and they're showing for 77, and they're required to put four handicap parking spaces. They had, they were at a deficiency when packets went out, they have since revised it and added the additional requirement for handicap parking spaces, so they're meeting those requirements as well. The landscape plan shows street trees along Sam Ridley Parkway West and the future roadway through Sewers Landing. Additional trees and shrubbery are shown within the landscape islands within the development around the building. As shown, the landscape plan does not meet designer review requirements, we'll discuss that here in staff comments. Designer view has been revised as well since packets went out, so the architectural elevations show the building to be a mixture of brick, glass, glazing, and stone. As presented, all four elevations are, do have entirely primary materials which would meet our designer review requirements, so staff is comfortable with the elevation that they have presented to you tonight. Standard comments, one through eight all remain, and several of the staff comments have been addressed as well. Comment one was a utilities department comment, which has been addressed, can be removed. Number two, we asked them to show additional street trees along Pilot Place, which is the future road which will connect all the other parcels within Sewers Landing and on Sam Ridley Parkway West to meet designer review requirements. They have done that, we're going to modify that comment a little bit. The trees along Pilot Place are shown within the right-of-way, so we need those trees to be shifted outside of the right-of-way onto private property. Sam Ridley Parkway landscaping is adequate and good, so we're okay with as far as that part of the comment is concerned, but just shifting those trees on Pilot Place was the revision for that comment. Number three, the street trees along Sam Ridley Parkway don't meet designer review requirements, regarding the size or species, they do now, so comment three can be removed. Comment four, we asked them to put foundation plantings on all four sides of the building per designer review requirements. The applicant has added on the corner portions where the parking spaces are shown, they have added landscaping in those areas, and they've also added some boxes with landscaping in front of the parking stalls. Not exactly your traditional around at the perimeter of the base of the building where landscaping was, that is something that they would like to propose as an alternative to tonight's on landscaping plan in the plans in front of you. So it doesn't exactly meet what designer view envisions it to look like, so for that reason, we would feel like, we'd like to leave that comment remaining and let y'all decide how you see fit for that. Comment number five is regarding the elevations not meeting designer view, they do now meet designer view, so comment number five can be removed. Comment six, the dumpster enclosure had some emphasis on it, we asked them to use materials consistent with what is shown on the primary structure, and they have done so, so comment six can be removed as well. And number seven, the number of parking spaces don't meet what is required for handicap parking, so they do now, has, have been revised, so comment seven can be removed as well. And with that, revised comment two for the trees moved outside of the right-of-way, and then comment number four for the foundation planting meeting designer view are the only two remaining staff comments as well as the standard comments, and with that, staff recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Mitch on this?
Could you discuss the Mott law College Boulevard?
Yeah.
Sidewalks, street trees?
Street trees can definitely address on that, the, there's a bit of sloping going on right there as well as some utilities in that area, so we always want to be careful when we, how close we locate any kind of vegetation to underground utilities for various reasons, so for that reason, they're just showing shrubbery along the parking spaces along Mott law College, and then there is a landscape island in that area which they are showing a tree in to at least an attempt to come close to what the requirement is for designer view.
Is there a sidewalk or not?
I do not believe so.
There's no sidewalk shown, no.
This is the way I, I walk to the YMCA, and I come up through the neighborhood, take my life in my hands as I cross the street, Sam Ridley, always an adventure. But you can clearly see that with this new development, Mott law is going to be a major entry point into the development with people coming on, I guess it would be the east side of Sam Ridley. So I would think at a, at a minimum, we, we'd want to start sidewalks on the Mott law College Boulevard side, and also, if there's a way, the YMCA did a beautiful job with those street trees, it really, you know, it's a beautiful entry there, and if it's possible to replicate that in any way on the other side of the street, I think that would be a, a wonderful enhancement.
Is there any utilities on the YMCA side where they put the street trees? Is there any utilities on that side where YMCA put their trees?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure if they're on.
I don't, honestly don't know.
Mark, Mark knows.
Which utilities are you asking for, sir?
I'm just wondering, are there any where YMCA improved their tree scapes along-
On the west side of Mott law.
On the west side of Mott law?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, there is a, there's a high-pressure 24-inch water line and an 8-inch gravity line over there, and they will have to cut a car, bore underneath Mott law Boulevard to access the water and the sewer line.
I think to Charles' point, it sounded like staff wasn't sure they needed to put trees on the east side because of utilities, but if we've got them on the west side because the utility is already there.
We got them on both sides.
Okay.
There, there's, you've got-
So, but to Mitch's point, he said, you know, they're hesitant to put any kind of tree growth near utility lines.
Trees, no, shrubs, we don't mind.
Right, but trees are, no. And so Charles was asking the question because the YMCA did it.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and kind of why can't we do it across the street as well? Is it utilities primarily?
Primarily, yeah, yes, sir.
Concern about roots getting into the line.
Yeah, I understand that, but, I mean, the Y went ahead and did it, I guess, but.
And it's probably, it's probably been there 20 years or more.
And so what, to Charles' point again, what would be the hesitancy of having a sidewalk running down Mott law Boulevard?
I honestly thought there was a sidewalk shown, I'm trying to find it.
I mean, I, I agree with him, I think you got a college back there.
Yeah, Charles has, there's some, there's some-
Between Marlowe Development and this development, we have a, we are showing a sidewalk because they are having to add an additional lane on Mott law. So when you get out to the intersection, you'll have a right-turn lane, a through lane, and a left-turn lane. So the developer of this property and the development of Marlowe, they have gotten together and came to the conclusion that that's, that Sewers Landing, they will take that on since they were running ahead of Marlowe. But they're, in their drawings, they are showing a sidewalk-
Okay.
From the right-of-way down their side that will connect on down-
On down.
And then you connect to Mott law, and then Genie Lane, you have your sidewalks there which will connect all the way down to Potomac now.
Right, perfect. I think that's what your question was, right?
Yeah, I just didn't see it on the plan, but I was just going through my site plan that we've been working with TDOT on, making, adding that additional lane on Mott law.
Yes, the developer of Sewers Landing and Marlowe basically both had some improvements they were going to have to make based on traffic studies at that intersection, and essentially Marlowe is, Sewers Landing is going to take the lead and do the work with Marlowe paying part of the bill, basically. And so those plans, that's what Charles is referring to, the plans, yeah, those construction plans show that sidewalk being part of the-
I've, I've had to figure everything inside of your head, sidewalks, it's such a nice development.
They're just going to all see they are there.
Okay. Okay, so we have sidewalks taken care of.
Yeah.
Let's get back to four, as far as the foundation plantings on all four sides of the building.
Yes, similar, I mean, that's what we asked for, the same thing, and was shown on the, the other gas station that was before you tonight, I mean, it's a similar requirement. For whatever reason, they, they would rather not do that, they want to put these planter boxes kind of within the surrounding sidewalk, on three sides, not on the east side, that's where they have their loading area.
Was, was there a reason given as to why they would not like to do that?
So spoke with the applicant earlier this week, and it was a, they asked why was the reason we required it, it's designer review requirements, and they asked me, what if we do these boxes? And I said, well, designer review requires plantings around the perimeter of the building, and they, this is what they wanted to do.
The idea, the plantings required is to kind of break up the building between, you don't have a concrete sidewalk directly in front of the building, you kind of have some, a breakup there to kind of soften the look of the building a little bit and increase the aesthetic look of the building, this is why they, why it's required, I mean, that's why we have them in designer view.
And I guess I was trying to figure out, was there some reason that it would be a detriment to the function of the building, or if it's just something that-
I can speak on that a little bit. Nick Madonia for Kimley Horn.
Come on up here, let's give your-
Name and address, please.
Good evening, Nick Madonia with Kimley Horn, 857 Stonemil Lane. So the reason for the planter boxes was obviously trying to accommodate the foundation plantings. Generally, Wawa has had some difficulties with mulching and any sort of landscaping around the front of the building because they do have a flush curb, just because they want access easy to the building. With mulching and stuff, with it being a gas station, they've had a lot of gas sometimes get tracked around that area, and they've actually had a couple fires. get tracked around that area and they've actually had a couple fires um, from mulch catching on fire. And then same with like rodents or anything like that because they do sell food. Um, that kinda attracts if they do have plantings around the building. So the kinda settlement that they wanted to go for was to add the foundation plantings so that there was a little breakup between the parking and the building, also adding some landscaping, but not really risking any sort of those other hazards they've had in the past.
So are you saying that's the only alternative?
That's, that's kinda their best, um, that, that's what they would like to propose right now.
From your perspective, are there other alternatives that would prevent, you know, issues with gas or you said, I think you said rodents?
Yeah, cause they have just, they, they sell food and everything, so that, that's kinda their main concerns that they've had in the past.
I guess what I'm asking as an engineer, is there something in between a planting box and foundational shrub? Is there something that, that could be done to prevent um, you know, gas flowing into this area to prevent fires? Is it, is it a raised type curve or is it, is it something that?
I mean, obviously a raised curve helps, but with, with their, you know, flush curb, that just doesn't really allow for the access that they want. Um, and in terms of the gas tracking, it's really just because of people walking through all the, you know, lanes and gas filling, so it's not really gas flowing that direction in terms of grading, it's just getting tracked over time. And then it just adds more protection between pedestrians walking around the building.
Okay. Other questions while we have Nick in front of us? It's a good looking building, Nick. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
I would just say we don't require molds, so it'd be, the plantings with, with stone, you know, rock, gravel, rock, you know, the landscaping rock, those kinda things, we wouldn't require it to be molds if that.
Okay.
If the flammable ability certainly, I can see the concern there potentially, so that's not something we would require them to do.
So it could be done with a material that is not flammable?
Sure.
Stone?
Uh, say like landscaping rock or whatever, there's no requirement of mold.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
So I have a motion to uh, approve?
With the box.
With or without the box, yeah?
I like the box. Let's go with the box.
Okay, I have a motion to approve with the.
Box plantings?
Planter box.
Planter box, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. We are now on to item six of our agenda zoning ordinance amendment, amendment to the zoning ordinance, article four, section four point zero seven zero.
Yes, this is a um, the zoning ordinance amendment to implement the discussions, the changes we've had regarding our PRD requirements, um, that we've had several meetings over, uh, Mr. Atkins referenced earlier uh, tonight. Um, so this is, this would change, it's article four, four point oh seven oh is where our planning development regulations are found. Um, we have that, we put that entire section in your packet. Um, a lot of that's obviously not being changed, but we did, just for clarity, we put it all in there. Uh, the areas that are change, being proposed to be changed are highlighted in yellow, um, which specifically it's four point oh seven three. We added uh, some wording in there with regards to again, twenty-five or more you, uh, dwellings, which is as we discussed, and then uh, adding the three lot tiers, minimum lot size of seven thousand and the three tiers of seven, nine, and eleven. Um, fifty percent of the lots within that small tier could be townhomes. And then the, the lot size requirements bordering uh, where they border the, the surrounding zoning, uh, depending on the zoning there, uh, that could be eleven thousand square feet lot size or, or the seventy-five percent of that required size of that abutting district. Um, and then uh, we kinda renumbered the current four point oh seven six to made it four point oh seven seven just for, make sure everything flows right. And then four point oh seven six is all new uh, with uh, the exterior facade requirements that we've discussed as far as materials, um, the architectural details, the facades that don't face the street could be differently than, uh, as far as the, not having the three materials, could be a single material. Um, the um, foundation requirements, they be covered in brick or stone, uh, breaking up the road, the streetscape along there with no, a minimum of two lot gap between identical elevations. Uh, we kinda have a description there with our drawings which we saw, you saw in our presentation that shows that. Um, the require that the dwelling on corner lots uh, face the, the higher classification street, um, and that those be corner lots. Corner lots would have the side entry garages then. Um, setback requirements which we already kinda have, this codifies this regarding thirty-five foot on public streets or thirty-eight on private. Uh, and that those architectural features like wrapper and porches, bay windows, et cetera could extend into that secondary front setback, not the main. The house faces the street, but the, that side street uh, say on a corner lot. Um, and then the side setback requirements, seven and a half feet for over forty percent of the lots, ten otherwise, uh, and then just some requirements, again, just implementing the, the issues on the, if they do side entry garages, you can maybe, you know, shift the house a little bit, have a little bit lesser of setback on one side just to, to give you a little more room to maybe get that garage around the side. Um, and then just through garage door requirements, design requirements with the windows plus two other items, uh, implementing that as we discussed. So uh, again, this is really just putting in writing all the discussion and that we have had um, for the last several months between planning commission and council. So this is presented to you for, for recommendation to, to the town council for approval. That's all I got.
All right, I know that we have all uh, attended the meetings and had a lot of discussion around this. Is there anything else that while, you know, you've had a chance to review this or, and while we heard the explanation that anybody would like to discuss?
Just clarifying next steps, this goes to council for approval and then when would this go live for?
Well, the council will have to, it'd be two readings of council, so uh, next week and then as well as in December. Uh, the discussion has been that when, okay, Mr. Peach and his staff have to write the actual adopting ordinance, there will be some sort of a delay, I guess, like a three month window or something like that, and so maybe it would be uh, within the ordinance that we may be adopted in December, but it might not be effective for ninety days out from that or something like that.
I think we did discuss that in, in all of our meetings.
Right.
We did the same thing with impact fees.
So probably.
Give people time to adjust to.
Be March timeframe, something like that.
So if, if that date is March, then any application leading up to March effectively is still using today's rules and anything after that would be?
Correct.
Okay.
If that's what gets.
And just. May have to remind a few people about.
Yeah, yeah, you always do, right?
Yeah.
Um, and just out of curiosity, how does this get published for developers to, to be able to absorb it?
Uh, well, we've had several developers have been coming to the meetings and that sort of thing. We've talked to, as developers have, we've had some meetings with folks who are considering new developments that, and we have relayed that to them, these, these changes are coming. Um, so um, so many of them are aware of it, certainly obviously it's, it'll be publicized and, and are normal as we publicize all zoning ordinance changes uh, as well. Um, of course, our packets and all those things are being put on, are put on the website as well, I mean, so it's out there. Um, we, we, I wouldn't typically, but we certainly could consider some sort of a, an email listing or something that we push it out to, to some developers and that sort of thing just to make them aware as well. Again, many of our engineering firms have been attending those meetings as well, I mean, so I mean, I think the word is out there, I think most people do know. Uh, and again, as we meet with people, we're telling them that as well, so.
Kevin, with what's before us, we're, we're hard and fast and set, in other words, if somebody says, I wanna do a sixty-seven hundred square foot lot, but then, you know, I'd like to have eleven thousand three hundred square foot lots, it's not gonna work, is it?
I think the council, I think, I mean, certainly you still have some leeway, I think, and this is what we have said we want to see, um, I mean.
As I do with every PRD.
Yeah.
I mean, that was uh, council there.
Right.
Pretty much made that clear one of our meetings, you know, when we got wrapped up, he said, just remember you still have the purview.
Right.
To make adjustments, but I think to Tim's point, it'd be good if we all kinda knew, you know?
Yeah.
That you can, can.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is, this is what we were asking for, for people, and I think if somebody has a, a unique situation, a piece of property is an odd piece of property or something like that, or with topo or something, I think also you have the, I mean, I think within any PRD, I think if somebody is proposing something that's maybe unique and different and maybe doesn't meet the exact letter of every one of these rules, but it's really a development that we might wanna see or, in, in a specific location it makes sense, you know, or something like that. I think you still have a little bit of leeway uh, within the rules, so to speak, to do something a little different if somebody wants to propose something.
Kevin, I was in all those meetings, obviously, and there was one question, just for clarification, with this two lot gap, that is two blank lots between properties, that's not counting the property, the subject property, correct?
Yes.
So it's one and then two, and then another one, it can't be one, two in the middle?
Right.
Okay. And then one other question I had was on the gable roof line above the garage, I don't know that I even recall that. Can you tell me what that was?
That was just as one of their options if they, that they would meet, there wouldn't be a requirement that they have that, no, that's just.
Yeah, I saw that, I was, I didn't remember discussing.
We were just trying to provide them as many options as we could to, cause, just to provide more options and more variety, potential variety there.
Regarding the timing, what's been your experience in the past? Do you see a lot of applications right before the effective date? Or does the community understand that this is where we're headed and they try to work with it?
I think most people we've talked to, again, we've met with a few, uh, as we've worked through this process and again, to let them know that there's, changes are, are probably coming. I mean, one in particular said, we want our development to kinda set the standard for the new guidance. So I mean, most people, we haven't seen a lot of, and as, as different developers that have proposed multiple developments in Smyrna, we've talked to them about it, most people have kinda understand and appreciate what we're trying to do. Seems that's, most of the discussion has been that anyway.
I think we're seeing that not just in Smyrna.
Right.
Surrounding areas, municipalities are all met with the same challenges the county is, is uh, visiting that right now as we speak, so.
Sure.
I think they're good changes, I think as long as uh, planning and council can use this as our guiding light, so to speak, we can make some positive changes. We just need everybody to remember this is why we did it, this is hopefully supportable, you know? But to Charles's point, did you ask how long it usually took after it was approved? Is there a?
I might ask that question.
We were talking March thirty, I guess, was the effective date.
Yeah, the March, if we do a ninety day window, it'd be March.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. Uh, there's so much advanced work done for submittals to get one submitted in now, it takes months of work. So there may be, I don't know of any, but there may be some that already prepared their submittals, there's a lot of money involved in that. And if so, we could see something under the old standard, but going forward, at least we know what the, the acceptance this will be. Okay. Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Thanks for the word.
Yep, well done.
Yeah, staff did a really good job putting all this together. All those in favor of approving this recommendation to council, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this recommendation is approved. We are now on to the November bond review report.
I'll try to go through this quickly, there's another month with several tonight. Um, several of these, we're hopeful we'll be able to, to release, um, beginning with this first one, Buckingham, section one, phase two. Uh, we would recommend a three month extension, if they're not able to get everything done, if they are, this is the end of the maintenance period, we could release that one. Uh, Oak Meadows, section one, uh, this is one we've had a couple of years, they are making some progress here, getting closer to being built out. Uh, would recommend a six month extension on this one for those who are not to the maintenance period yet. Woodcrest three, uh, very, very close, uh, it's being finished here. Um, I think pretty much if we can get some, replace a few stop signs and get the ads built to us, we'll be done, so hopefully we'll be able to release that one between now and the eighteenth, otherwise a three month extension there. Uh, Rookers Bend, this is our, we gotta work through this one, I think, still, we would recommend an extension on this one still, this is one of our unfortunate developer did pass away and we gotta figure out how we're gonna finish that one up with the money we got or work with some, there's some other options there, I think, so I think we can uh, maybe get that fixed, but I do, would recommend a six month extension on that one while we nail that down. Uh, Wind Farms, offsite improvements, there's again, getting close on that one, um, we've had that one about three years. Um, they're, they are working with us, so we're doing some work on the, a bridge in that area as well, so I think we're, we'd recommend a six month extension on that one because they're kinda, kinda working on, with conjunct, in conjunction with us on that part of that. Uh, West Fork, one B, again, very close to being finished, they are hoping to finish that out um, prior to their expiration date, um, so would recommend, hopefully you'll be able to release that and give it three more months if for some reason they're not able to finish. Uh, Blakeney, there's I think three phases of Blakeney, section two, uh, all at the end of the maintenance period. Um, again, they are working through and I feel like they're getting close to having everything finished, so would release those. Um, if everything's done, otherwise three months on all three of those. Um, the Cedar Hills, section three, phase two, um, this is one we've had a couple, we could buy two and a half years now. Um, did talk to developer, they're hoping to get that paved uh, this fall. Uh, if they're not able to, they'll pave in the spring, but they're hoping to get that paved in the, this fall. Would recommend a six month extension so they can get that worked out. Uh, again, Blakeney, another phase of Blakeney there, um, in the same situation, uh, and they're getting, working on getting everything finished up. I did hear from that developer, not to say that we didn't, but we did hear from them and they are trying to get everything done, so hopefully they're able to, we can release if, if they're done, otherwise extend three months. Uh, Cedar Park, um, I did, that developer, they're looking to finish that punch list this winter and pave uh, early spring, March, April, May timeframe, so we recommend a six month extension on that to get, so they can finish that work up. And then another phase of Westover, again, same, same discussion as the previous phase, they're, again, they're trying to get everything finished up before their expiration, so would hopefully be able to release that one as well, so, that's all I got.
Okay, any questions or comments concerning the November bond review reports?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve the November bond review report, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor of approving the November bond review report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the bond review report is approved. We are now on to staff comments.
Only have, one thing, and there's no date or anything yet for this worked out, we are. We are, uh, getting close to the point where, um, we're going to have some, kind of some sort of a workshop, public input, not a public input, but kind of a stakeholder-type, uh, input with, with this group, as well as the parks board, as well as council, on, uh, our, as Charles referenced, our thoroughfare and bike path plan. We're, we're actually meeting with them next week, the staff, with our consultants, to kind of look at our projects and those things, and some priority, and what we want to do, projects and new routes, things of that nature. So that's coming. I don't know exactly when that, yet, it's going to happen yet, but that is coming. For that, I'd say, this group, the parks board, as well as council members, will be invited to that, so that's all I got.
Okay. Dave, welcome. I think this is the first for you?
Second.
Second, okay. Welcome to the second, then. All right. Anything from the commission?
Uh, yeah, just a quick comment. First of all, of course, we had elections this week, and, uh, local elections were also part of that. I want to congratulate Jerome Dempsey. He's our, going to be our new council member, because my good friend Tim here has decided, uh, life needs to tick forward without all this stress. So, uh, Tim, we're going to miss you on the planning commission and on the town council.
You're here.
And, um, uh, Tim and I go back to age 13. I've known him that long when he threatened to beat me up. And, uh, we made instant friendship right then and there. I talked him out of beating me up over a tree fort. I think that was my first real estate transaction, actually. But, uh, Tim, I want to say thank you. You're a friend of mine, and like a brother. And so I just appreciate everything you've done for this body. We'll say more at the end of, uh, your term, when it's coming up, late November. But, uh, man, I'm going to miss you on this body. You bring a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of guidance, uh, calmness, and you do your homework, I know you do. You've been an excellent chairman.
Aw, man, thank you.
And so I just want to put that out there, for those of you who don't know how hard this guy works to prepare for this. He does. He takes it very, very seriously, so thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. You're here.
By the way.
Yep.
I don't think I'm going to be at December's planning. I've got a conflict, so I needed to say that tonight.
I was going to tell you.
You thought I was out.
I was going to tell you, fortunately, I think you got me for one more time, anyway. Uh, we're missing a couple folks tonight. Uh, we want to wish Amy Wise a happy birthday. It was last?
This week.
This week, yeah, and Amy's actually recuperating, uh, from knee replacement, which I hope I haven't broken any HIPAA laws, but in the event I have, I've had knee replacement this year myself, so, uh, I know what she's going through. We want to wish her well, and, you know, wish her a happy birthday as well, and with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.